I think we're good to go.
Good evening and welcome to the March 28th, 2022 Board of Education Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The meeting is called to order. Thank you to those who've come tonight to share your thoughts. Public comments will begin after the superintendent and board reports. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Agenda of Monday, March 28th, 2022 Board of Education Meeting be approved is set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
I second.
This is a roll call vote?
Director Merschbach?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Timinsky?
Aye. Tonight, we have four public hearings: Washington High School ADA Locker Room and Restroom Upgrade Projects, Tuck Pointing Projects at Roosevelt and McKinley Middle School, and the Secure Entrance Project at Roosevelt Middle School. Board Secretary Day, have we received any written correspondence related to either of or any of the public hearings on tonight's agenda?
We have not received any written correspondence.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the public hearings?
No one has registered regarding the public hearings.
Okay. Our public hearings are now officially closed, and we will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Bush, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Timinsky, and good evening, Board of Directors, and good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. So I just have a brief update. It's hard to believe it's already the end of March. Just seems like a couple days ago it was the beginning of March. But we did send out a communication at the end of the week last week via our Communications Department and our e-newsletter, and it's also on social media. Fingers crossed, friends, that we have no more weather decisions. Great members of our transportation team are here tonight, too. I could see some of our employees. We're all hoping for no more weather-related issues, especially regarding winter. So, we have communicated that there is a shift of instructional days that are necessary due to the makeup time that was needed for our calendar. Currently, the last day of school for students has shifted to June 1st, which is an early-out day. We have updated our school calendar that is available on our website. Also, if you were to go to the front page of our website, there is a note there highlighting this announcement from Friday. If there should be another weather-related issue, it could be fog. Let's hope not snow. We would certainly update our community if there were any other necessary adjustments, but this is celebration. It is the end of March, and let's hope it gets warm soon. So, on that note, spring is here, and just some notes of things that have happened over the recent weeks here as we've embraced spring. On the far left, you'll see that is our metro-area marching band marching in Dublin, Ireland. And on the week of St. Patty's Day, they are in Dublin, Ireland, and of course, the metro marching band encompasses students from all of our marching bands in Cedar Rapids. So, so proud that we could provide that opportunity for them, and thank you to the families and students who raised their hand and said, "Yes, I want to do this international learning experience." In the middle, very, very proud, 22nd year, for everybody to know, that the Jefferson Academic Decathlon Team, yes, are the state champions once again in the state of Iowa. Congratulations to them. They will go on to the national competition, and the hard, hard work that goes into that competition, and to all of our decathlon students from our high schools that participate in that very rich academic competition. It's tough, tough work. So applause to them. And then finally, spring also brings on spring cleaning and projects, and there's a picture there of one of our staff members taking care of some things that happened over spring break, but those things continue to unfold through the spring, and we'll start planning, believe it or not, summer projects next. So, we look forward to spring activities coming underway, and those will be more updates in the future, but those are the brief updates for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for those updates. Are there any board reports this evening?
President Timinsky, I have a legislative board report. Just to bring you up to date on some of the education bills that are still alive in Des Moines at the state legislature. House File 2577 is, contains two parts of the governor's omnibus education bill dealing with transparency and also with the high-stakes civics test. Basically, that bill has come out of the Appropriations Committee in the House and will be debated on the floor. It has changed some of the transparency requirements from the original bill as it was proposed by the governor. It does ease some of the requirements for posting instructional materials. It also outlines protocols for library materials, selection of and review of library materials. There have been some changes to compliance requirements for districts who fail to follow the legislation. They've changed some of the compliance issues. And most importantly, or equally as important, it, this, the amendment struck the high-stakes civics test. In the original bill, there was a civics test that all graduating seniors had to pass. They do have to take the test, and those scores do have to be reported, but it does not impede their graduation. So, that's a big bill that should be coming to the House floor soon. Other bills that we're watching, the Appropriations Bill for Education has moved through the House. That's a laundry list of the ways that money is spent outside of SSA for education. There still is a bill alive in the, we think in the Senate. It's an additional 19.2 million in supplemental funding for public schools to help with the cost of inflation. That's, that bill has passed the House, but the Senate needs action on that. And then, of course, we're still watching the voucher bill. Right now, it seems that that bill is in the House Appropriations Committee. It's been sitting in that committee for a bit of time, so we're uncertain if there's enough support by committee members to move that out. So, if you're going to do any advocacy for public education, it is that voucher bill where we have the best chance of making a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you for the report. Any other reports? Next, we'll hear from those who have requested to address the board. Laurel, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we have members that have registered to speak tonight.
How many speakers do we have signed up for public comment? Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. With four speakers this evening, you will be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to any, to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, it is in the interest of equity and fairness that your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meetings law, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between the board members and the public during the time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individuals speaking. We have received all requests and will listen to all submitted. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board will have zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Laurel, you can call our first speaker?
Our first speaker this evening is Sally Schab. She is representing the Cedar Rapids Community School District Transportation Department, and she is here to talk to the board about base pay.
Good evening. My name is Sally Schab, S-C-H-A-A-B. I live at 2641 Zika Avenue Northwest. I have been employed by the Cedar Rapids Community School District since 2017. I really enjoy my job. I really enjoy the children. We do a tremendous amount of work in our transportation department, both bus drivers, van drivers, and attendants. We have a staff that sees to it that all the students get to school as timely as possible. Some days, it's a little more challenging than other days. My reason for coming tonight is I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware, because you folks have a lot of other things that you're paying attention to, just wanted to make sure that you were aware that in 1998, hard to believe that that's 24 years ago now, but in 1998, the base pay for a school bus driver in Cedar Rapids Community School District was $16.77 an hour. Today, the base pay for a school bus driver in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, the base pay, is $18.88 an hour. That's $2.11 an hour more in 24 years. That is one of the reasons I personally believe that we don't retain bus drivers, and it's difficult to get new bus drivers. It is a part-time job. We all understand that when we sign on for it, but we do have a great responsibility. We are transporting the most precious cargo. You know, I can transport a lunch to somebody, and if that lunch spills, I just go back and get another one. I don't have to worry about it. I would make more money transporting meals than I make transporting students. It's your precious cargo, and I would just like the board, maybe in your discussions and your talk, to relook and see if there's some adjustments that couldn't be made for the bus drivers. I'm here mainly, I'm a van driver, but I'm here mainly speaking for the bus drivers. $2.11 over 24 years for base pay. We can do better than that. We're a better city than that. We're a better district than that. When I got hired on, I was an attendant, and then we started the van program, and I went and got my chauffeur's license to become a van driver. Then I became also the trainer of new van drivers. When I was interviewed for that position, I made mention to Scott Wing and to Erica, and I'm not even going to try to say her last name, that I took great pride in where I work. When someone asks me, "Where do you work?", I say it with great pride. I don't like to go, I work for the Cedar Rapids Community School. I don't like to do that. Trust me, I do not. But one of my goals has been to make us the best, not just here in our area, but in the nation, that other school districts would come and say, "How are you guys doing this?". You know as well as I do that all districts are struggling to hire bus drivers, attendants, schoolteachers. We need to set the example and have them come to us and ask, "What are you doing right?", so that they can take and follow our example. Thank you for your time. Have a nice evening. I'm sure warm weather is on its way.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Craig Sealy. Craig is here to speak about ideologies, agendas, sources, and teaching methods.
Thank you, school, my name's Craig Sealy, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Thank you, school, honorable school board members for giving us this opportunity to address you with our concerns. I was a school bus driver for the Cedar Rapids Community School District when I was going to school, and that was an experience. I don't know how the director, I'd come in, and he'd hand me a route I never saw before and said, "The regular bus driver didn't sign up. I'm still alive", if you know what I mean. So, it's been calculated by people at the University of Iowa just to survive in this community. It would take $24 an hour, and that's just helping the, the, what do you call it, the single parent to survive. So, if we're going to have the best in everything, buildings, hopefully, education, we should have the best for our school drivers. Otherwise, the kids wouldn't even be in school. So, tonight, I'd like to talk about discrimination compared to promotion. There is a fine line, but a gigantic difference between discrimination and promoting something, and we have to be very careful what we promote. If you look in the second half of the first chapter of the Book of Romans, it'll tell you what is an abomination to the Lord. You shouldn't be promoting it, but you shouldn't be discriminating also, because these people are created in the image of the triune God, Genesis 1:26. Let's take Leah Thomas as an example, the swimmer, birth gender female. She was ranked 457. Now she's ranked number one until the Florida governor took away her accomplishments and gave it to the next female swimmer. How are we going to solve this? Well, this is what came to my mind. We're going to have a different competition for transgenders, and if we can't do that, then the transgender, if they can't find someone to compete with the same birth order, has to compete with the regular athletes that are of the same birth order, whether they're male-to-female or female-to-male. That is a suggestion that is probably a very good solution. Now, I would like to talk about public money. Cindy spoke about it last meeting that I was here, and it was said that public money should only go to public schools. I've been thinking about that ever since. There are people, if you look at it from a nationwide, I like to speak nationwide, not of this school district. If you look at it nationwide, the public schools are getting money from a gigantic diversity of people, different beliefs, just different cultures, et cetera, et cetera. So, if it's true that the public school nationwide is a democratic operative, that is unethical, because you're only representing a certain amount of people. There's 75 million conservatives that voted in the last presidential election. So, how can you solve this problem? Well, you got to remain neutral, and if we want the best education like we want the best buildings, you have to teach the young people to be truth seekers. You can't just be proselytizing them and propagandizing them into one side. It's no wonder our country is so messed up. So, it's something to think about. Why? Because the Bible promises that the truth will set you free, and it will keep us free. The truth defends the truth. And if we're created in the image of God, the triune God, one of the things that Christ said, "He is the way, the truth, and the life". The truth is very important to part of the Trinity, and is probably very important to the whole Trinity. So, these are things to think about. Let's have the best education for our kids and quit messing them up by dividing the country. It's an abomination.
Our next speaker is Leann Erickson. Leann is here representing Grant Wood Advocacy Committee, and she would like to speak about Grant Wood and the FMP data.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Leann Erickson. I'm at 528 Forest Drive. I am an educator. I was honored to be a 2019 finalist for Iowa Teacher of the Year, and I am a founder and CEO of an equity education consulting company, excuse me, and I'm a proud Grant Wood Griffin. My three sons attend, and we live just behind the school. I'm here to speak about the research collected by the Grant Wood Advocacy Committee, which is composed of community members. And though we've worked with Grant Wood in mind, we know this research is relevant for the fates of other schools, and we, as a committee, humbly ask the board to remove the closing of Grant Wood from portions of the facility's master plan. We have come up with a list of items that we would love to see addressed before moving forward. First, a lack of community input. We conducted a recent survey of residents in the Grant Wood area. Forty-nine households responded. Of those who responded, 39 opposed the closing of Grant Wood, eight are in favor of the closing, and two do not have enough information to decide. In this survey, we also collected data about connection to the school, use of school property, and opinions about what makes a school great. We are happy to share these findings with the board. Additionally, we will treble to hear that current and former members of the Facility Masters Plans Committee note frustrations with the process. We are told these meetings are held in a way that does not invite actual input from members. Current and former members feel they are being told what is happening and not actually participating in the process. In fact, several community members we spoke to said they stopped attending FMP meetings because they felt that the school district was going to move forward with the plan regardless of their input. This is unfortunate, and I know not the intention of the district at all. We hope that it can be remedied by authentic community engagement. And while recent elementary school meetings were wonderful, they were not well-attended, and we would love to support efforts of seeking more input from the community as we know you all desire. Regarding school size, the community has been told that 600 is an ideal number for elementary schools, but we are struggling to find research that supports that theory. Many studies state that 200 to 400 is an ideal for elementary school enrollment. When elementary schools are at this number, studies show there is an increase in attendance, academic achievement, co-curricular participation, and a sense of belonging, as well as a decrease in disciplinary incidents, truancy, and alienation. Additionally, I surveyed principals in the National Network of State Teachers of the Year, and several responded supporting the lower numbers and the needs for neighborhood schools. We know that pods are planned, but do not believe they fully address this issue. Though students will be known by a group of teachers, belonging, as research shows, happens when students are truly known at school by staff, by volunteers, by administration, by the people they pass in the hallways. As enrollment numbers rise, creating that sense of belonging, a critical step to academic achievement, becomes more challenging. We have requested that links to research be provided so that we can better understand where that 600 number came from. Next, we want to talk about equity. Closing neighborhood schools is hard for students, particularly during this pandemic, and it is disproportionately hard for students of color and students living in households with lower socioeconomic status. Moving students to Erskine State means many students lose their ability to walk to school, which could decrease attendance and access to learning. We must also acknowledge that the new school site is in a part of town that is predominantly white and wealthier than where Grant Wood currently sits. Research shows this type of move can increase inequity for students, and we would like to discuss how we will address those inequities that arise. And finally, community partnership. Research shows that active community partnership can raise academic achievement. In fact, data, can raise academic achievement data three to five percentage points. When factoring in SES numbers and looking at Grant Wood and Erskine State test scores, we see Grant Wood gain those points and can directly tie that to community engagement. Grant Wood boasts of one of the strongest volunteer programs in the district. Community members support the school through student mentorships, classroom volunteer programs, PTA, and other events. Removing Grant Wood from the community means those students lose those community connections. We know improvements must be made. Building repairs are needed. ELL students should be able to have access on-site, and we must ensure that the buildings are ADA-accessible. But we believe renovations can meet this need, and have also submitted letters regarding cost. We deeply respect your work and understand that education is remarkably complex.
Thank you. Your time is up. Our final speaker this evening is Chris Tyler. Chris is here representing the Cedar Rapids School Foundation Board, and he is here to provide a quarterly update. Along with Karen Swanson, I might add.
I am joined happily by my executive director, Karen Swanson. My name is Chris Tyler, 1931 Oak Knolls Court Southeast, and thank you to the board for having us to provide a quarterly update tonight this evening. Just a few bullet points to share with, with all of you. First of all, about three-quarters of the way through the school year, our finances are in a very strong position. We currently are 100,000 more than budgeted for this time of the year. We also are preparing for the 2022 Senior Walk. These walks are going to occur the first two weeks of May in all 21 of our elementary schools. Our professional development grant, professional development grants will go live next week, and through this process, we grant approximately 10,000 in funds for educators to continue and augment their education. Dialogue has begun with all four high schools to support efforts providing recognition of all graduates in all areas of post-secondary endeavors, ranging from trades and full-time employment to college and the military. We're currently working with HR to fund hiring events that would increase minority and equality in classroom representation. This January, we welcomed four new members to our board, two of which are alumni, and our current student representative is a, is a junior, senior, junior at Jefferson High School. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Tyler. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate vote? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? To the personnel report?
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Merschbach? President Timinsky?
Aye. Our Learning and Leadership Assessment Update is up next on the agenda. I'll turn the meeting over to Nicole, Adam, and Eric for the presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to give a very high overview of our assessments, and for elementary and middle school, we're going to be looking at our winter assessment data, and for our high school, we're going to be looking at our fall assessment data. Can you think about our strategic plan? All of our assessments are our goals to meet our strategic indicators that are around equity, around proficiency, and also around that graduation rate. So, our whole goal and purpose from our student learning, we have all these measures and strategies where we're working to intentionally close student achievement gaps and increase in student achievement for all of our students within the system. So, we're going to start with Eric giving an overview of what it looks like with FAST for elementary, and then Adam will talk about iReady, and then I'll talk about the high school pieces, and pull them all together using some strategies that we're currently using to increase student achievement in our system.
Thank you. Thanks, Nicole. Good evening, everyone. Like Nicole said, at the elementary level, we look, we are measuring our FAST, and obviously, FAST stands for Formative Assessment System for Teachers. This is intended to provide teachers and principals and staff an outlook of how, how students are performing in reading and math. When do we do this? We do it three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, and we're, we are measuring growth for reading and math. And it's for all K5 learners. And let me make sure I can turn this. So, let's get into the data. I'm going to take you back, this is interesting, because I'm really excited to present this tonight, and you guys, a lot of you know me. I'm going to take you back to 1920 in the winter, right before we I'm going to take you back to 1920 in the winter, right before we shut down, and we were at 63% benchmark, and we were celebrating. I can't read it. What's it say? What did I say? I'm taking it way back. 1920, right before COVID, we were doing very well. Okay? And then all of a sudden, COVID hit in the spring of 1920. Okay? And that shut us down, and we didn't test, we didn't screen. So we came in the fall, and you can see how we pummeled. And that was, and most of us know this, that was a direct correlation that kids weren't in school. We did the best we could. And then, as you can see, in the fall of 2021, we started to grow, 2021 winter, and then the spring 2021 is at 58% at benchmark. I am pleased to announce, and a lot of people, we talk about this, we went down from 58% to 55 simply because of the summer slide in a lot of, in a lot of occasions. But with KLC and some of the other summer programming, we were able to hold firm. And now, the big part, or the big thing that I want to stress is, we just concluded our winter FAST benchmark, and we are at 60%. And I think I want to congratulate the principals, I want to congratulate the teachers, because if you look at this, we have basically in a year and a half, we're back to 60% with the goal this spring to hopefully get up to 65. That's where we're measuring it at. So very, I'm just, I'll reiterate, in this position, I have the privilege to go out to buildings and talk to principals. I get into classrooms when I can, and teachers, paras, they're all working extremely hard to get these scores back up so that kids can read fluently. Math, not a lot of data. In 2021, it was optional, and this is the FAST math. So as you can see on the screen, we only had 11% tested, 12% tested, 12% tested for the 2021 school year. We did make it mandatory. That's why you see a better participation. So currently, this particular school year, you can see that we're at 53, 53%. We have work to do in math. I think Nicole might allude to that after the presentation or after Adam gets done and talks about the high school. But we are in a study right now on how we best can use our FAST data to guide our instructional decision-making. So that's my short report. I'll turn it over to Adam.
Good evening, everyone. Similar to FAST in elementary school, iReady is a tool we use as a predictive measure for ISASP in, in middle schools. We went through a process of selection. There were four leading candidates three years ago now, yeah, three years, or four years ago. This is the third year we'll have data from that. Similarly, fall, winter, spring, knowing, and you'll see data today, that this is really a predictive measure of, to give us a dipstick of where we're going to be at the end of the year. So when you look at this, and we'll talk about it, but yellow and green is what correlates to proficient on our ISASP. We chose a more rigorous measure as our interim benchmark data to give us a better measure and make sure that we're hitting those marks when we get to the end of the year. So if you, if we start back in the 1920s school year, that's 2019, 2020, you'll see the stair step that Eric alluded to as well, and that's what we want to see. We want to see every year getting, or every assessment getting a little better throughout. And unfortunately, we didn't get the opportunity to perform that way on the ISASP, so you'll see that there was no test there. When we came back in 2020, 2021 in September, the same story that elementary had is the story we had, but a couple issues. We saw some significant growth mid-year, which then ultimately dropped off in March and then popped back up in ISASP. These results were very wary of putting too much weight into, one, because it was in the middle of COVID, two, the participation issues that you'll see were, give us pause. As we look at this, we know our kids struggled mightily. We are excited, and it is a real cause for celebration that we started the year and have made significant growth since September. We're plus 11 in proficiency or projected proficiency, and our teams are working really hard to maintain this trajectory as we go on. We switch to math. Similar story. You'll see that the nice stair step was happening in 1920 throughout, no test, unevenness last year. And then this year, we see a nice gain again. I would echo what Eric said, though. Our principals and our teachers are working very hard to see this progress, and this isn't easy. So a huge point of celebration here, and we hope, and we're working hard to make sure that we see that, those similar gains again in the spring.
So I'm excited about elementary, middle school progress. You aren't going to see the high school progress, but I'm going to let you know when we share it with you at the end of the year. I'm sure we're going to be excited about that as well, because our teachers and our administrators are working really hard to, to show these student achievement gains. This is the first year we'll have a full year of our MAP assessment, and instead of doing it three times a year, we're currently doing it at fall, which is the results we're going to look at tonight. And then we're also going to have the MAP assessment done in the spring. And again, this is the first year, last year, we did it in the spring for the first time. So this will be the first year we actually have assessment data to be able to compare. Also, there's three areas of growth to look at. There's that math, reading, and science. Science is only given to freshmen and sophomores. Math and reading is to ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students. So if you look here, this is kind of the opposite. So the red is at or below the 40th percentile. So if you look, we're going to focus on the teal, above 65%. So our reading scores are the highest, and again, this was our fall data for our MAP assessment for high schools. When you look at math, we were at 58%, and science, we were at 48, or 49%. That also gives the percentages in the bottom. The reason there's that gray area for science is because of, again, our 11th graders are not tested for science, so there's that opening in that piece there. So also, for all of our assessments, we're not only looking at growth and closing gaps, but we're also looking at the percentage of students taking the assessments. So that's something that we're really focusing on and making sure that students are in school, getting that quality instruction that our teachers are providing, and the instructional capacity that our administrators are providing to grow those buildings. So when you think about why we think we're seeing those results, it's about quality instruction, right, in every classroom. It's about instructional leadership. It's about us as a system being intentional, focusing on goals. They both talked a little bit about our PLCs. Well, PLCs, we need to give time to teachers, we need to have that data readily accessible so we can make decisions based on what that student achievement is and then make adjustments in instruction because of it. Also, quality professional learning. We're trying to focus on being intentional, listening to teachers on what do they need, listening to administrators on what they need. And then on that coaching, we believe in coaching cycles, and that grows people within our system to be very intentional about what those coaching cycles are all about and what those are focused on. So we believe if we keep doing the things that we know foundationally are all about quality instruction, including that guaranteed and viable curriculum that we have in place, and we have some things streamlined throughout the system, we will definitely see these numbers keep increasing as long as we're intentional about that and we're very focused on what we're doing throughout the system. I don't know if it was Eric or Adam that alluded to math. For example, here, math in our system, our teachers are saying we need something potentially different, whether that's training or whether that's resources. So we're really looking at a system level, what is it that we need? So you have the resources and tools and support that you could provide that quality instruction within your classroom. So that's a process, that's going to take some time, but that's one of the things we're currently working on, and we're hearing that at all three levels. Hey, if we need some help with math, we need some help with this alignment. And a lot of it's on the system piece, like the alignment isn't currently there with our grading practices and with measurement topics and standards and so forth. But we, we need to be listening to them to guide us to do better as a system for that alignment to get to the goals we're looking to achieve. Questions?
I'll defer to my fellow board members. If you have like a lot of questions, if you can just limit it to like one or two, just give every board member an opportunity. I'll start with you, Director Humbles.
First of all, thank you for the report, but when I go back to the iReading, Ready, Reading for Middle School, and when I'm looking at that graph for the 2021, 22, in red, I think it's red, is it red or orange or, okay? It says that more than one grade level behind. Do we have that broken down by race and ethnicity? Who's falling into that? Because I, I noticed that you said you're aware of the gap, but with, if you could provide some additional information, and if you don't have it now, you can get it to me later.
Yep, absolutely. We have it, and we can get it to you.
So there's another piece I should probably allude to that I was supposed to say. We want to do a deep dive into this data for the whole year with the board and maybe a work-type session later on at the end of the year, once we have that second piece of data from our MAP assessment for high school students as well. We have those data and pieces. This was just a very high-level view, but we really want to dig in and be able to have the board and the community be able to understand and hear what those pieces are as well.
Just out of curiosity, when would a work session like that be, be possible sometime this summer?
Yeah. It'd be great if we had ISASP assessment data back as well to be able to do as our system indicator, but.
Did you have any other questions, Director Humbles?
No, thank you.
President Garlock?
I have a question about the MAP assessment, specifically the science assessment, and why is it only given in ninth and 10th grade?
That is what MAP actually recommends. It's a good question. All I know is that what currently is what MAP recommends for ninth and 10th grade. We also had for that 76% of our students at those grade levels tested, so I think we also need to work on getting our student numbers up so we can have more accurate data and feedback to be able to do cross-comparisons.
Okay, is there, is there any sort of assessment available for 11th graders? Does MAP have a component for 11th graders?
My understanding is we could do science for 11th grade as well, it's just the choice based on the recommendation that we don't. So if that's something the board wants us to look more into, I think we can have those continued conversations because I do think it's available.
Yeah, I would like to continue that conversation for obvious reasons, but I think, I think it does send, I think it does send a message to students that, okay, after 10th grade, you're not going to be assessed on science, so that's not important anymore.
Right, and it really is because we know they're assessed at all the other levels on science for ACT, SAT, yeah. Appreciate that feedback.
Any other questions from the board? And when I look at that first slide that had the board goals on it, strategic plan, let me just get back to it on my screen. The proficiency, it says like from 18, is it 1819, is that the year? 64.5% and then 2022, 80%. We're trending in the right direction, but we're not going to hit that 80%.
No, not, not by 2022.
Right.
But we're trending in the right direction, so the pandemic made us take a dip, but now we're back and trending in the same trajectory we were prior to pandemic.
Yeah.
Because people are working really hard.
Right. Yeah, it looks like all the data is pointing in the right direction. It looks fantastic, just like, you know, I know, like, looking back, that 80% was just a really aggressive goal. So maybe in the next year or so, we can maybe look at that, or do we think 65% is the right target for us to have, like even looking into next year?
I feel like things are streamlining, and people are now back at work, and the health and safety aspect is, I shouldn't say this out loud, maybe more foundationally in place than we're hoping, right? Kids be able to come to school, staff can be coming to school, and that's where our quality instruction is taking place. So I feel like we have the system in place we have had, and now it's just staying intentional and focused on the work that we know produces results. I think we can get there.
Yeah.
And I mean, I think we can get there in the next couple of years easily, especially by the progress our buildings are showing by, again, all the work that they're doing. Amazing.
Good. Yeah, I'd like to, I like the idea of us having really significant goals that are hard to achieve, but we can make, make a pathway to get there. And the question's already been asked about equity, so I'm looking forward to that work session this summer to really dive into that. And the data is available sooner, certainly I would love to get the, get that to the board. Great. Any additional questions from the board?
One more question, sorry. So we know that summer melt happens, I mean, you, the summer slide happens. Are there any additional things we should be considering to address that?
So we've had the opportunity with Esser Dollars to expand our community partnerships and what that looks like throughout our system. We've also expanded, as you know, Champions for before and after-school care. We also have summer programming with them. So there's more opportunities, so we're trying to create as many opportunities for recovery of learning, and that intentionality is possible, so we don't have that summer slide. So we're going to have information on our website, so parents can be looking for that. Some of them are choice programs, and some of them are based on where students are in the system, that, hey, we're asking you to participate in this so we can get your student achievement higher than what it currently is and help you and assist you with that measure. But I do think we've been, again, intentional because of the situations we've been placed in to really expand, and community partners have been willing to work with us on that recovery of student learning. And Champions, they've worked with us also on being intentional about what that looks like and those programs. So we're helping drive that as well.
Are there other ways to get the information out about the summer program? I know we always say go to the website, but there may be folks that don't have access to that. I know we think everyone does.
So we've been doing social media, and there's a virtual backpack, and we're also actually sending some things home in backpacks because sometimes that works better as well. So I think all of those avenues and venues, we're, we're trying just to make sure everybody is aware of opportunities. And we also want to stress, don't let money be the barrier. If you have the need or the want and you want your child in a summer program, please reach out to your building principal or one of us, and we can connect you to that support. Really important.
Great. Any additional questions? Well, thank, thank you to each of you for, for the presentation. The publication and scheduling of public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 budget will be presented by Dave.
Thank you. Thank you, President Tominski and the board. I'm pleased to present to you the first overview of our budget, budget publication for 2022, 23. This is actually to set a public hearing at our next board meeting, but this is kind of the first overview of our budget for next year. What you see here is a budget cycle. So where we're at today is March 28th, which is in, in the red box. That's where we actually set our public hearing. We'll actually have our, our actual public hearing notice will be in the paper on April 1st, and we'll hold a public hearing on April 11th, and so we have to have it done by April 15th. And then we start working on, then in May, we have the budget amendment that's due for the current year we're in. So we have to have that done by the end of May, so we'll actually propose a scheduled public hearing on May 9th, just like we're doing tonight, and then we'll move into May 25th of having the actual meeting, and then we'll start working on our line item budget after that. That's kind of the main cycle for a budget process. So for next year, what we're looking at is all funds, everything gets boiled up to all funds. We're looking at total revenues, which includes transfers in and expenditures actually include transfers out. That looks, that's about $3.308 million for revenues and expenses of $317 million. You can see it's 8.3 million in expenditures over revenues. One of the things that you're going to see here is like, oh, public tax rate of 1471. If you remember where we're at today, we're at 1536. So that is a reduction. We, we, we've had a slight reduction in some years past, but this is a significant reduction. We'll talk about that in a little bit. What does it include? In general fund, these are some big highlights. This is based on 2.5% supplemental state aid, but when we look at what our new money is, it's really 1.57% when you take into our enrollment loss and our open enrollment out loss that we have. And that also includes the $5 of the per pupil formula equalization piece that the legislature incorporated. So overall, we had 146 decrease in student enrollment, and this also, this year, last year, we did qualify for budget guarantee. This year, because of the 2.5%, we actually are above 1, 1%. If we were below 1%, we would qualify for the budget guarantee. So overall, we are at 1.57 above the 1%. And right now, we're looking at a cashed-in-levy, which is the SBRC School Budget Review Committee cashed-in- levy, things that are, have authority backed. That's a 13.96 million, which is just slightly down from last year's of 14 million. And to be quite honest, that is the max that we could actually levy this year, even though we actually had, which I'll talk a little bit later, we actually had more qualified SBRC deficits that we could have taxed back, but we were capped at our, our total amount that we could do at 13.96 million. And this actually, we always want to make sure we stay above the 10% solvency ratio. This budget does provide for that, and it And it also includes an estimated revenue expenses that we just built in the budget, about 14 million, which is in track to spend the money by the end of 2024. In the management fund, we're looking at an increase in a levy of $888,000, and that supports our premium increases. We have property estimate increase of 7% plus 13% of all other coverages that we have. And in addition, we're being faced with, this is across the state because of the derecho, not just necessarily derecho, but it's all wind hail claims. EMC Insurance has instituted a $75,000 deductible per site, okay, per claim. So, so let's just, like, if we would have had that and the derecho happened, we had basically all of our buildings impacted, okay? And that was approximately, that would have been equated to $2.6 million is what claimed probably, and what did we pay? We paid $10,000 for that. So this is a big shift, and so I didn't think it was appropriate necessarily. Hopefully, we don't have another derecho come through and impacts every one of our buildings.
Yeah.
Because, so this does provide, it's like eight buildings. I think we're going to levy a little bit extra each year to build the balance in case something significantly happens, but I didn't feel like it was right to try to throw all of that. And this, this is a budget of about eight buildings. If we were to have a hail or wind damage to one of eight buildings, we would have the dollars there for that. And then also, we just included 10 million saver revenue for a third elementary. If we issue bonds for that, we would probably issue the first round would be 10 million, so. And so now expenditure side of things, we're looking at, the negotiated settlements are built into our costs, and we have, like I said, $14 million in Esser. And where have we been with our spending of Esser? You can see we were at about 50 million is what we totally generated. We spent about 8.5 in FY21, and we are estimated to spend about 17.1 this year. And we're projecting about 14.4 for next year, and then the remaining 10.4 for the following year. It's kind of how it would shake out right now. Obviously, that could change depending on our needs in FY22 next year, but this is how it's kind of shaking out right now. And what I talked about a little bit ago about a management fund, you can kind of see that, just reiterating that. And of the 10 million that we would potentially issue for the third elementary, we would probably only incur about 2.6 million in this next year of expenditures. So that's like a little design and maybe some initial upfront construction cost. How does it impact for property taxes? For taxpayers, this is actually good news. This is really looking at a $200,000 house, and we are sitting at, like, a $136 decrease in property taxes overall for a $200,000 house because of rollback, look at a rollback, and plus homestead credit. It's, total taxes from FY21, '22 is, you know, FY21, uh, '22, it's $1,615, and FY23, it's $1,0052. You do the monthly, it's actually a decline of about $11.33 per month. So that's actually good news for our taxpayers. And so, but how, why is this? Well, I have here, it's like, it's a 65 cent drop overall by not being on a budget guarantee. Last year, we had about 45 cent levy for a budget guarantee. Because when you're on budget guarantee, it's property tax levied. And we also, the state, the state, in addition, changed the foundation formula percentage. Typically, they fund at 87.5%. They're starting to increase that each year. And so next, next year, it moves up to 88.4. What does that do to your overall levy? It's actually more state aid, less property tax to fund the foundation formula. So that also plays into the overall decrease in the property taxes. How do we, so you can see where we've been. You can see we're at 1548, down 1538, down 1507, back to 1536, and that's a significant drop down to 1471 for next year. How do we compare? This is FY22, the current fiscal year. I don't have all the data for, for next year, for all the comparables. I'm, they're starting to come in. Actually, since then, I've seen some in the paper, so I kind of jotted them down, you know, right now. So this year, we were at 1536, so you can see we're at 1471. You can see where we fall compared to everybody's tax rates this year. And right now, we can tell, I know for next year, it's pretty steady for college for next year. I know they're going to be at, proposing to be at 1661. LEMAR is proposing to be at 1736, and Marion's proposing to be at 18, flat there. So we are going to be, take a significant drop in the area, and we'll be one of the lowest in the area, so. How's our cash reserve levies been? So we're looking, it's a pretty flat. Last year, we were just over 14 million, and we're just under 14 million this next year. How are we doing on property tax valuations? The good news is we're constantly going up, so that's good news. And so hopefully, that continues on. So we're at 15, 5.86 billion last year, and this year, we're at 5.94 billion in property tax valuation. A little bit of some funding, formula-driven data that ties into our formula. You can see that we have a certified enrollment. It's at 16,980, prior year's enrollment funds the current year's, next year's budget. Per pupil allocation, the new number is 7,413. That's based on 2.5%. The total SSA dollars that generates is 119 million, which it equates to 1.65 in new money, but we take our enrollment down because of losses for open enrollment out, it drops it down to 1.57. That's, and you can see the history of all of those. Last year, you can see that we were on budget guarantee. So the new money is always based on 1% because when you apply our open enrollment numbers, last year, we were actually at 0.87%, actually less than the 1%. So you can kind of see where we've been. The foundation formula, it's really funded basically between state aid and property tax. When you look at the numbers this, for proposed for next year, it's about 64% state aid and property tax, about 36%. How are we doing on fund balance and on spend balance? If you sat in some of my budget, learning opportunities for, you can kind of see, we've talked about this. We can see, man, our fund balance has always been so much higher than our unspent balance. You can see now it's starting to equalize. So, so now we're going to be kind of where we were. The amount that we have in unspent balances, we really have the authority to, our fund balance, we really have the authority to spend those dollars, and now it's starting to equalize. So we're projecting it to be actually flip-flop a little bit. Unspent balances is slightly higher than our general fund balance in FY23. Those numbers, those are far out projections. These numbers can change quite a bit. Where are we at for our solvency ratio? We talked a little bit about this last, we actually jumped up a little bit, and we're projecting it to go down, and we knew that was going to happen. And so when we look at bold goal, bold goal, it's between 5 and 10%. But recently, ISB sent out a survey asking if schools felt like it was, it would be beneficial to actually change it from 15, 5 to 15% to 7 to 17%, which I was like, oh, ISB was changed from what I remembered to be 5 to 10. They actually changed the recommendation to 5 to 15. And now they're looking to have discussions and possibly increasing it from 7 to 17% as moving forward. And we're, we're within any of those, we're within those goals. And like I said, we've always, the board has always said that, between 5 and 10, so we're above that right now. Any questions?
I'll defer again to fellow board members.
I think I have a question.
Yes.
There's lots, lots of information here.
Yeah, that, that is a lot. I just have a question about our insurance. You mentioned EMC, you know, and the $75,000 per site. Is EMC our only choice for property insurance?
You know, there is a, another group out there. It's self, kind of a self-funded pool. ISEP is out there, and there's a, there are, I don't know how many schools are in that, but there is another group. And I don't know if they are also putting in wind hail limits as well, which I would, I mean, I'm guessing they probably are as well, but I don't know that for a fact. So there was a, years ago, there was another group that tried to break into the Iowa arena, and they could not get any traction. And so they, so they basically had stopped trying to. But EMC is pretty much the main on, unless you want to go into this self-funded pool.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask, as we go through this process for the public, you know, there's been a lot of talk lately about kind of our budgets and sustainability. Where would the public look kind of for a more detailed breakdown? Is it in that sheet there, you know, when we were talking about how much it costs per school to, you know, per student at each individual school building? And then in particular, I'm thinking the cost of what's going on in this building, you know, no offense to anybody who works in this building, but I just want every building to be treated equally when we're having those conversations, and I want the public, because there was a lot of talk about that, I think, in the last election, you know, cost of administrative spending versus cost of, you know, in-person spending. And so where would the public look through this process for that kind of breakdown?
Under the certified budget, you're not going to get to that detail. Certified budget is really at a very high, high level. And to be quite honest, it's, it is a, some schools have different rule of thumbs with what they do. They certify high enough so you don't have to amend their budget. And so it doesn't go until you actually go into your line item budget where you can see the breakdown. And to be quite honest, we don't, yeah, the data's there. We can run reports that show how much we spend on each building. We can run reports, but we don't typically even put that on our website, break it down by building, by, you know, the budget and to that detail level. Do we have that data? Can we run reports to that level? Yes, we can, but we don't, our budget doesn't break it down to that level of detail.
Right, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dave, for the presentation.
Yep.
We are voting on the approval of the publication and scheduling of the public hearing. So all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. For those opposed, same sign. Last on our agenda is the Facility Master Plan Amendment. We're excited to hear from Superintendent Bush and representatives from the FMP Task Force about the recommendation.
Thank you, President Tominski, and thank you, board members, making this an agenda item for tonight. We are, realized that we've been spending time on this, and so obviously, at the end of February, we spent some significant time on this discussion. Tonight's presentation is going to include some of those things we discussed last time, as well as per your questions and feedback and the feedback that we've received along the way from the task force as well as the community, clarifying maybe some of the questions that surfaced from the board, and also then an official recommendation to move forward on the, on the task force. So I do want to give a thank you to, again, the task force members who've committed so much time and energy to this work. It has been a very heavy lift. It's been a lot of data that's been with the team. And I would say just the past couple of meetings, we've actually been able to have better opportunities to process that data together. So that has been greatly appreciated. And tonight, Dave Nicholson and John Galbraith and I have been members of the Steering Committee to design and support this process. John's going to, going to be the champion at the podium. I'm going to be the champion here, and together, we're going to give you an update tonight. We do have members of our Facility Master Plan Task Force who are going to bring their voices forward, and we'll introduce them in just a few moments. So just as a reminder, tonight's agenda is really going to include, just clarifying, of course, the connection to the strategic plan. We always want to do that, as you heard earlier on our assessment presentation, the clear focus, of course, on the elementary work. We want to review the supposals that were made to the board in February. We'd had 10 community meetings since that meeting in February, as well as a task force meeting. We want to invite those task force members' perspectives officially have the recommendations for you and clarifying the specific questions that surfaced last time, and then with some data that you asked for as well, and then, of course, questions and feedback. So on the strategic plan, this is a pop-out of one of our strategies. And so you saw earlier that, as our assessment team presented, the focus was on the student learning area. This is over in that other column under Systems and Resources, and that, the Facility Master Plan that was adopted by the board in 2018 was one of these strategies. So the task was to clarify what the next step on that adopted plan in 2018 should be. So that's been the task of the task force. Tonight, specifically focusing on elementary schools. Know that in the, later in the spring, we'll be bringing back secondary conversations for secondary buildings, but tonight, specifically elementary schools. So on that elementary focus, next slide, please, Mark, thank you. And, hey, John, if you give me the driver there, then I'll hand it back to you. I can, I can drive, I think. Thanks. Mark's like, thank you. Please drive, Noreen. Excellent. So we had, I'm going to actually go to the next one. So in the board update that was provided in February, we had these two initial supposals that really came to the top. There were other ideas too that we thought were a little longer-term discussions. I want to appreciate the community member brought up those other ideas that are a little further down the road, and we do need to have those conversations continue. But in the two initial supposals is Project One, which was a focus on Arthur and Garfield, and Project Two, which is a focus on Harrison and Madison attendance areas. So what might come of those two initial projects and the supposals that were brought forth? Secondly, making sure that we continue to have community sessions. We had six community meetings. Two of those were hosted virtually for in person. And then we also had four staff meetings at the aforementioned buildings, Arthur, Garfield, Harrison, and Madison. And so through this process, we've had a lot of data to look at, and then we've also looked at a deeper dive to these supposals. So I want to thank John as a fellow Steering Committee member, as well as several members of our task force. We have Mark Woodwick, if you want to give away, this is going to be coming up in a few moments. Mark is a member of our amazing team that manages the plumbing throughout our entire system. Thank you, Mark, for being here tonight. And then Principal Jennifer Nury from Arthur, Catherine O'Connell, a staff member from Arthur, and Sarah Hale, who's here as a parent as well, members of our task force, who are going to just kind of be their voices of experience and then also their thoughts on these next steps. So I'm going to kick it over to John, and then I think we're going to start with Mark. Is that correct?
Yes. So just real quick, really, the entire task force, I want to thank them. Lots of data, a lot of different perspectives in that room, and a lot of time spent on talking with each other and figuring out what our next steps are. And I think we got two good next steps coming up here. Bottom line with our buildings is, is the need just keeps growing. We don't ever get to a spot where we get to check things off the list. Every time we get something checked off the list, more pops up, and Mark can probably speak to that better than I can. And our students just deserve the best. That's what a lot of the meetings focus on, is what do our kids deserve, and our kids deserve better. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark. Like Noreen said, Mark is district maintenance personnel, really focuses in the area of plumbing, and he gets to be out in crawl spaces and fixing the leaking pipes and really doing anything else that's asked of him. So a little unique perspective, it's easy for me to talk about it, but really, Mark lives it. So with that, Mark, if you might come on up.
Hello, my name is Mark Woodwick. I've been a plumber with the Cedar Rapids Community School District for the last nine years. I've been a master plumber with the district for three. It's my pleasure and honor to have served alongside the great members of the Facilities Master Planning Committee 2.0. We have invested many hours in in-depth discussion regarding the progress made from the first Facility Master Planning Committee. We have discussed where we are as a district, where we want to go, and more, how to get there. I was asked to bring forth my, my own viewpoints as an employee of the district who has seen behind the curtain for nearly every behind the curtain for nearly every building. In my personal and professional opinion, we have remodeled and upgraded several buildings and a small selection of their mechanical systems, including but not limited to new geothermal units, lighting, paint, and flooring. However, the piping systems behind the walls have been addressed only on an as-needed repair basis. Unfortunately, many of these piping systems are galvanized, and according to research, the lifespan of galvanized piping is 40 to 50 years. As you very well know, most of our buildings are well over 40 or 50 years old. I'd like to share a few brief examples of my work behind the scenes. I currently have a repair request at Harrison Elementary built in 1929. It's for a galvanized water line that needs to be replaced. Line has aged to the point where it is ballooning at the level of the floor. Not only does this section of pipe need to be replaced, but the valve used to isolate this area of the building is located in the crawl space of the basement. The valve is very old and may not shut off the water supply. If the valve fails, or if the line breaks, then the next available valve would be in the building's main water supply. This greatly compounds the difficulty during the schooltime hours. Another example is I was requested to make a repair on a toilet over at Grantwood Elementary. I was requested to address a loose toilet. I found the closet bolts that hold the toilet to the closet flange had failed due to age. In order to pull and reset the toilet, I needed to shut off the flushometer's water supply. However, the flushometer was original, and the screw stop would not turn, no matter what I tried. Thankfully, during the previous summer break, an isolation valve was installed on the cold water supply for this wing of the building. After draining the two-inch cold water supply for, line for this wing, I was able to remove the old flushometer and install a new one that was tied onto the existing galvanized piping. If this toilet repair were to have been on the other side of the building, my only other option would be to shut off the water at the main or the meter, resulting in no water available for the entire building during the school hours of the repair. A final example is that on the first day of classes several years ago, we had encountered two separate elementary schools having a main line sewer backup. It was later discovered that tree roots were the problem. We have since set up a maintenance routine to auger these lines annually, but the efforts do not address the root issue. There are a few high-level looks here into the many mechanical issues that are unseen behind the freshly painted walls, newer LED light fixtures, and regarding the piping that is downstream of these newly remodeled restrooms. I believe that in order to fully embrace our district vision of, or statement of every student future-ready, we also need to take a deep dive into every building future-ready by taking a fresh look at the unseen mechanical systems and start taking steps to address these multiple needs across the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And Team Arthur has, board members, just as a note, Team Arthur did put together some talking points. This is not in your prepared slides, but I have them here on the screen, so you'll be able to follow along with their, their thoughts. So I would invite Principal Nurey and team, and then I'll hand the clicker over.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Nurey, the Principal of Arthur, and I have with me...
I'm Catherine O'Connell. I'm a classroom teacher at Arthur.
I'm Sarah Hale Kyzmann. Hi, I'm an Arthur parent and a lifelong educator.
And Catherine was on the FMP...
Please step up to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Not loud enough. I apologize. Catherine was on the FMP, the first round, 1.0, and Sarah and I volunteered and joined on 2.0, so we filled out the form that came through. So we've enjoyed this process, and we learned a lot, and it's nice to work together. So that is the three of us here tonight, and we're just talking about Arthur. I'm a little bit disappointed you didn't talk about some of the plumbing needs, Arthur. I was like sitting on the edge of my seat, because we have a really good water feature right now in Ms. Catherine's room that we can't seem to stop, but we'll let that go for now. So we just have, we're just kind of jumping some, the perspective on the information shared. We sat on the committee. I didn't realize it had been that many sessions. I've enjoyed it. I love to kind of learn just about how our facilities and the needs that we have. We definitely feel that the information was detailed, even though the process started years, a few years back, they came back to that information, people asked about it, it was thorough, it was definitely, there was a lot of conversation about the needs of students, and that if I hadn't, didn't hear it once, I think we all heard it many times. Students deserve it. It's a place and opportunity. Lots of connections coming back to our district initiatives. I've heard even some conversations about professional learning communities, collaborative learning for students and staff, and that great class size structures. So I'm thinking about those sizes. I know at Arthur, next year, we're going to be impacted with a reduction in staff, and we are going to more likely have to do some type of combination, just because of the nature of size. So just different perspectives from that, and anything you ladies would like to add on, on what we learned through the process?
I think, just to reiterate kind of...
Oh, sorry.
Where we came from?
Just to clarify, it's for the recording, and the audience is out there. Yeah.
So kind of where we came from with the FMP 2.0 was really coming with the, working from the base of what the first committee put together. So we weren't really taking a look at like what to do with elementary schools, you know, do we put them back together, you know, or close them, or things like that, because we're taking those supposals, or the, you know, what we already, what that team had already put together, and looking just kind of at those next steps on where to go next. So just to clarify kind of the level where this process has been.
And I just want to clarify that with the information that has been shared for this facility's master plan, with the number of committee members that were on the previous facility's master plan, there is a huge amount of carryover, which has been very beneficial for us, because then those conversations from four or five years ago can be tied into the conversations that we are having now. But the one thing I know Jen said that I'm going to continue to reiterate is that we, the message that has gone through is that we want what's best for all of our kids, no matter where they are. And so I'll let Jen continue.
So how will the facilities, Arthur and Garfield is one of the supposals that was presented to all of you, and how will this benefit students, with students being our main focus and why we come and do the work we do every day? So access for all students currently, Arthur facility cannot access all students. We cannot have inclusion of students with disabilities. We would not be able to have any students with any type of walking, a walker or a wheelchair throughout our building, and/or any staff member for that matter. We really actually couldn't even support the public. We've been requested to have the building used from a public standpoint, and we don't meet ADA requirements there. And so, and I was even learning about that just recently, because our bathrooms are not ADA accessible for like voting, et cetera. Collaborative learning spaces, opportunities, and small group learning spaces. If you would take a walk in Arthur, you would see a lot of students having to learn in hallways, cafeteria while food is being cooked. Anytime that we have anyone that has to come for one-on-one sessions or bringing our outside resources, we're scrambling to find any type of space. I have to have four different positions in one room, because with COVID, I had to give up a space as someone's instructional space. So we are definitely, people want to donate clothing to our school, and I have to turn it away. I don't have a space to hold the clothing, and, and I'm not exaggerating, I wish I did. And that's hard when we have people saying, we have winter coats to donate. I just, we have the spaces, so students who'd benefit from space. Anything there? How will this benefit staff? Facilities, I encourage collaboration between classrooms as well as student collaboration. So coming back to that, really, that focus we've spent, I've been a part of Cedar Rapids, this is my, I believe, 20th school year. I've been in education, is that right, 23? Wow, time flies, but you're having fun! And so, it just goes fast, doesn't it? And PLCs, I think, has been on Cedar Rapids Initiative for at least 10, 12 years, I believe, and I know we spent, I would, I would venture to say millions of dollars in that work, and I truly value that work. I think everyone values that work. But just to have the capacity to have teacher teams of three to four teachers, it really does, I've had that experience with a neighboring district, and I can see the opportunities that it offers for teachers to collaborate together versus when you have a singleton. Singletons are hard. Catherine experienced that last year as a singleton in a combination classroom, and you kind of become yourself, and you're, she was just reaching out for anyone to collaborate, and so she got me in our instructional coach, which was exciting. But is it really, could we find opportunities? Minimizing those combination classrooms, those are difficult things that we have, decisions we have to make and sell to families. Safer learning environment. I, I think I've had someone at my building multiple times this year servicing our building. I, it's kind of second nature. I would drive up, I'm like, oh, I wonder what the white van's here for today? I don't really know. There's been three this weekend that, it's just, we're constantly needing help, whether it's, our heat is not working, we've had many cold days this year, we've had a couple fires from electrical needs, and we have some, we, we try to find humor in this, so we have some natural water features, some water running that we're not really sure we're working through to find. And I've already mentioned storage as a concern in our facility. So staff and students and other, all this crossover. So anything there? We thought about recording. Also, our plumbing system with the heater, it makes a really loud noise. I do have a recording, but it's hard to display that tonight. It does, it is actually scary. Students will stop because it bangs. It's older system, and you know more about that, Mark, but I don't need to enlighten you on that experience. So how will this benefit families and community? I do think there's some, just a better facility for learning, meeting spaces, and practices. People do want to access our committees, our facilities, and we are a public entity and want to be able to offer that. Community resources may be more of a possibility, just for spacing. We don't have the ability to bring in some of those resources. Improved accessibility of accessing the facility. I have worked, this has been initiative of mine as a principal, our drop-off and pickup procedure is, I've worked with the Cedar Rapids Police Department and, oh, I just lost the name, Streets Committee, and because we've had major concerns with a drop-off and pickup, a new facility, that would be naturally a part of it. I think both of our facilities that have been constructed, they naturally put that in. I've also lived by Gibson. I know Gibson, when even that was built, 20 years, they intentionally planned for that. That was not planned for 100 years ago. Kids were walking, all kids were walking to school. And the tax dollars being used more effectively due to a more efficient and up-to-date facility. We are green team building, and we are trying all the time to improve our score, and there's just some things we cannot improve our score on. And even if I'm begging people to shut doors and do certain things, we've not been able to improve our green team score. And we have a high-functioning green team, but we just, there's only so much you can do. I tried to get more lights that shut off on their own, and I was kind of told no, because at some point you can't, but I was trying anything. So anything there? So current experiences versus future opportunities. So here we are, just as a reiteration of some of the things I've already mentioned, inconsistency, the safety, termites, musty spaces, combination classrooms, and then the future, just overall improvement for all of these. And at the end of the day, it's every, for all of our students, we want to provide this for all of our students. So we've enjoyed the experience, we've had some difficult conversations, we've had good collaborative conversations back and forth. I know there's still conversations or questions about the size, 450, 600, the location, all of that, but we are very excited and really think that Arthur and the Garfield combination is going to provide some great opportunities. And so we hope that you've enjoyed this. We love, you're always welcome in our building, now that you can come out and be in the building and experience some of these things, challenges, but...
Features.
What's that?
The water feature.
The water feature, yes.
It's working really well.
It is. And actually, I was visiting Catherine, right, literally right before we came, and it started trickling again. She's like, oh, it's melting. I'm like, but Catherine, there's no snow on this ceiling, on the roof to be melting.
It gets to be relaxing, though, after a while.
It is, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a natural, yeah. So we would love to welcome you to our facility. It really is, we have amazing kids too and staff, so in addition to some of these needs. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Team Arthur, and, and would invite questions for, certainly the team now, or we can just move forward here and then save questions for later, but thank you. Facility Master Plan Task Force members, greatly appreciated. And handraisers just said, hey, we would love to help if you need people, and so thank you for being, saying yes for that. And members of the team that are here in the audience, again, just hats off to, to the team and all the work of the task force members and the hours they've committed. So, so to cut to it, let's talk about that amendment, and really, what does the amendment actually mean? So in 2018, there was this visual that was the committee recommendation, and that original visual included these pictorals of the schools being newly constructed, three renovations and three potential phase outs. And so I think that, to come back to what this team has done, is we're keeping that big idea of looking at, how do we look at the bigger picture of what the task force recommended and what the board adopted in 2018, and also allowing ourselves to ask, but is that still where we need to be? So this pictorial, and I've also, thank you for the feedback, I have a narrative of this as well, that we'll look at in word, in words as well. But the, the first idea is in the bright green, this is the recommendation of how we would recommend to edit the current, the former plan. So what maintains is Arthur was in the first tier of the, of the first tier of projects, of being a potential new construction, and considering the annex at Arthur in that construction. So we would maintain that recommendation. However, what's in question is the number where it says 600 student capacity. Originally, it was considered looking at all the neighboring areas to Arthur, but this team looked at the current enrollment, and the recommendation was to consider only Arthur and Garfield. The current enrollment to those two schools is just over 450. We do know that we're having maybe still a little recovery from DeRachio, but we're not recommending that it's necessarily a 600-student facility. The 600 number came from a four-section-per-grade-level recommendation. Four sections means four kindergarten teachers, four first-grade teachers, four second-grade teachers, et cetera. So it was not so much about 600 students, more so about four sections at each grade level. If you were to look at Johnson on this original pictorial, Johnson says, has 450. Part of that recommendation on the original Facility Master Plan is because Johnson's little landlocked and also doesn't have quite enough geography to encompass what was perhaps a 600 building. So we're recommending that we reconsider that, that headcount. Perhaps what we need to look at is more of a three-section building, but also having the allowability of flexibility or growth if we're going to, if we anticipate that in the future. Secondly, work with our community on repurposing historic buildings. I think some of the concern has been all along, is that if there were to be a new construction at Arthur, specifically a historic site, does that mean that the current facility, it is beloved, and we know that that comes with ages of buildings, that it would be demolished? That is, clearly was not the recommendation of the task force, and definitely, I think the board indicated last month, we would want to work with our community to make sure that we worked on what the repurposing of the current Arthur would be. Still our property, we would need to determine what the next steps of that property would be. And that then we would consider the RFP for that particular project, a new build, to be in the spring of 2022. Notice that the second green circle connected to that green square is Garfield, and that Garfield would be part of that project consideration, which means that Garfield attendance area would also need support in a plan for our students that currently attend Garfield. I think we have 209 students this year at Garfield, and how we would continue to support our families at Garfield through this process. Again, the same with the historic building, and really honoring that facility at Garfield. The second project that would be recommended, that is, the primary edit is this, is this part of the recommendation, that to consider Harrison instead of a potential newly constructed elementary, might Harrison become a renovation project instead? And that would that renovation, what would be the student headcount size? Again, we're thinking that if it were to be Madison-Harrison student population, that number would not currently constitute 600 students. So we would look at, again, perhaps a three-section recommended, recommended building with flexibility and collaborative spaces in order to be able to grow if needed, and that the RFP process would be in the fall... And that the RFP process would be in the fall of 2022. What was not part of the original design, and also I would say that you know, you don't see on this slide, nor on the next slide, will you see the pause being articulated on the plan. We would need this continued conversation. Uh, we would recommend that there would be a subcommittee immediately um, for this second project to determine which path we would want to go, so that in the fall, we could do an RFP process for architecture. And if it's going to be a renovation or a new build. If it was a new construction, we're not clear on which site that would be. If it would be at the Harrison site or at the Madison site. Madison, as you can see here, was considered originally a phase out. If there were to be a new building, Madison has quite a bit of green space behind it. But we would also want to look at the current population of students, where they're attending, uh, where they live. And there are some students who are in the Madison attendance area that um, are uh, right next to Harrison and vice versa. So that data, we would want the subcommittee to take a look and make those next step recommendations. John, anything you'd want to add to that?
You know, uh, as part of the RFP process for an architect for the, the second project on this, um, we would include into that to have them show us what are some supposals, some ideas for, what's a renovation potentially look like at Harrison? What's a new building look like there? What's a new building look at Madison? We don't want to get into a spot where the committee makes a decision and then we put this out for an RFP and the architect says, that's great, you can do what you want, but here's what you may be missing out on because of some concise constraints, so on so forth. So um, we're going to ask the experts, right, on what are our options? And maybe they'll identify some things that we may lack um, based on one decision or another.
Thanks, John. If you'd stay right there. So this was also part of the original um, uh, drafted recommendation for the board. And really just to highlight here, it's the tiered bubbles. And if you see in the top bubble, it's the sites that were considered in the first tier were Coolidge, Arthur and Jackson. That would still be the plan if Arthur is the determined next site of a new build. And if you look at tier two, Harrison was in tier two bubbles. So there's not major alteration. What does alter is perhaps the timeline gets adjusted a bit. And by that, I mean it gets extended a little bit. Part of that is um, we've taken some time here. We did not put, we're not breaking ground on anything this spring. And also the um, the time in order to determine these next steps for uh, the next project. So narratively, um, if you go to the next slide, please. Oh, sorry. I think I'm driving. Next slide, please, Noreen. The recommendation summary. So it was recommended that CR CSD move forward with the next steps on the FMP with the following actions. First project, construct a new elementary school in the Arthur Annex for 500 to 600 students. And seek an architectural RFP in the spring of 2022 with the goal of opening in the fall of 2024. The reason that five to 600 students is there is, I imagine that we'd be, we'd be looking initially at a three section building, but we still want opportunity for flexibility of programming for, for example, special education, English language learning, et cetera. We will still need space for programming purposes. So then there's details of what that would include. And then the second uh, project would be prioritizing the Harrison-Madison combination project as a second project with the goal to seek an architectural RFP in the fall of 2022 with a goal of opening in the fall of 2025. Here's some last pieces of data for you. Um, thank you for these requests from our last meeting. Um, just some uh, interesting current information. Our enrollment uh, in 0102, um, that would be school year 2001, 2002. Uh, what our enrollment and then what our current enrollment is from this particular school year. So you can see what those combinations would be projecting under the current state for enrollment. What's the mileage between each one of those buildings? And then thank you to our principals for finding um, just the best way to estimate right now the number of walkers we have. And they also, every single principal said, pending the season, um, we don't always have the high end, but on the highest end of the year, if it's a walk, walkable day, this might be what the um, number of walkers we might have in each one of our facilities. And then just, these are the themes and questions that came from the in-person meetings as well as the virtual meetings and feedback that came on the form that was um, electronic to our community. Lots of questions around logistics. So I would say, um, there wasn't necessarily folks who were opposed to the recommendations, but they had questions of what's that going to look like for transportation? What's the timeline? What's staffing? What are the costs? What would, what we, what would we do the naming of the buildings? And so it was nice to have our current experience where we could talk about, well, this is how we named Maple Grove and West Willow. This is what we did with staffing. This is what, what those two buildings actually cost us. So that has been important. And so hence the pause on the plan. It's been nice to have the references of those particular logistics. Secondly, pronouncements on the neighborhood, and you heard some of that tonight, was really nice to hear as well. Please consider the unique needs of each neighborhood when designing um, for each building. And please consider green space in those um, considerations. And so just as an example, when Maple Grove opens, Maple Grove is not a mirror of West Willow. It is a very different design. But what maintains with it is designing for collaboration and unity and bringing kids together. And also a lot of emphasis of bringing the outside of nature into the school. So that's part of that design. What I've heard very clearly from the Arthur-Garfield neighborhood is please realize that this is a different geography, do use a different place in our community, and please be conscientious about designing for our neighborhood. So taking a design like West Willow and putting it on the annex at Arthur would not be the type of design that that neighborhood would envision. And then historic preservation, very clear um, that what is the intent of the school district? Please do not demolish beautiful buildings that have historical significance. And please include the community and the repurposing of that. Um, and then also lots of questions, could Harrison please be considered as a renovation project? And then uh, larger school versus smaller school conversations. Um, will larger school design lose that small school feel? And even the service of delivery and even uh, what, and what does that mean? Still questions coming back to why 600? So it's not about 600 students. Again, it's about collaborative teams having opportunity to provide service delivery to students. Um, the single section is not um, but when we know that there's opportunity to collaborate with someone else, that's not best practice for us as a school district. Um, but also making sure that we have sustainability as a district as well. And then, and so there was really great questions about that. And then the long-term planning, um, please continue a process that it's not just wait four years for the pause of the plan. Can you make this ongoing so that we're foreseeing what's next in the future sooner rather than later? And I think that's it. So thank you. Thank you. And thank you, task force members. So we're all open to your questions.
I'll again defer to my fellow board members. If we have multiple questions, just refrain, just one or two, and then we'll get around to all board members. I'm going to start with you, Director Garlock. Yep.
What do I want to ask first? Um, I guess I would like, this is not so much a question as a, as a comment and an emphasis on collaboration. And I know on our little name signs here, it says on the back, how will this decision impact students? And so that is always first and foremost in our mind. And these new buildings, as they're being designed, definitely address student collaboration. But I would also like to talk about staff collaboration. My experience as a classroom teacher is that teaching can be a very lonely profession. You go into your classroom and you close the door and it's you and 30 teenagers or, or whatever, the age group. Um, and it, it is, as a professional educator, it is so critical that our teachers feel supported by their peers. And if I'm teaching and I have a question about my classroom instruction or I'm unsure about something, it's really helpful if I can go to lunch and have my other three co-teaching peers help me through that problem. And I know that we're working really hard with our professional learning teams, and that's great. But when something arises in your room, you need to have a colleague that you can go to right there in that moment. So I think not only are these collaborative spaces great for our kids, but they're great for our staff. Um, I, so I, I think, I think it's great. So um, that's, that's my comment. Are we going to come back or should I ask my second question? Okay. Do we know how much room we have on the Harrison property? Like if we do a renovation there, is there sufficient space for expansion? Or would the footprint be a similar size as it exists now?
Um, I guess, do we think that there's space there? Yeah, we do believe there's space there. Um, but that's a lot of the reason why we would put in our, on our RFP to our architects. Can you show us what this may look like to potentially identify any issues that there would be um, with the renovation project on the Harrison site? But we believe that there would be space to have the amenity of every other school that we're um, building now.
There's um, uh, two, um, I would just say supporting buildings next to Harrison. One is the Northwest Rec Center, uh, which is really a city facility. Uh, the other though is um, our connections program, which is a whole additional part of Harrison. And so I think that we would want to make sure that we're looking at the whole land print. And then also there's been um, kind of offer and invitation um, uh, to look at other um, districts that have taken a little deeper dive into renovation projects of older buildings. And we certainly would want to make sure that we're looking at those opportunities as well. And um, John actually has background in renovating um, educational spaces as well. But absolutely, we'd want to get the experts on that site to make sure that this is. We know that we have land behind the building to be able to do that, but it's just a matter of when you do a renovation, it's not just is there space? It's also then, we still have children that need to attend school. And when you renovate versus a new build, then you've got to have a place to put children while you're doing renovation. So it's good to have a spare space around.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Albles?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Facilities Master Plan Committee. I know this is a big job and as plumbing, what you're going through, I don't know if I could do that. But it, that is valuable information for us as, as a board and Arthur School, uh, for you to come and speak before the board. Because I think sometimes we have to take the time to really walk through these schools because some of them are old and we do want what is best for our students. So I, I thank you for doing that. And when I look at working together, and I know I, I believe we will be trying to decide tonight how we move forward. Is that correct Superintendent Bush?
Yes.
Okay. That bringing, I think it's so important with the neighborhood, how it's going to impact the neighborhood, our teachers, our students, because our, our students and everyone is deserving of uh, that new space, open space. And I've, and I have been in a lot of the schools. So as we're working through this, uh, like I said, I appreciate the work that you guys have put forward because it, this is tough. I like that there were sessions where the community could come and speak and voice their concerns. And that, based on that information, that will determine to you how we move forward. So this presentation has been very helpful to me and listening to the voices. So I thank you.
Great, thank you. Director Mishra?
Um, my first question, I'm not even sure who this question is for because I'm not sure who makes this decision. I know I got this exhibit um, on Saturday morning, I believe. When was the exhibit published for the general public?
It was published this morning.
Okay. I think it's inappropriate to vote on something like this with so little time for the public to see it. And so I'd like to move that we table this to our next meeting.
Any other questions?
Well, I'd like to, I'm making a motion to table this vote until our next meeting.
Well, I think that, so um, I would leave that for a decision here. But also I just want to make sure that every, every board member would have their opportunity to, to reflect.
I'm okay continuing the discussion. I would just like to move that we postpone the vote, table it till our next meeting.
Heard. Are there any other questions? Do we continue discussion?
Well, and I'll just say that we did, um, the last input session was last Wednesday. And we did leave that um, community feedback form open. And so um, I apologize that there was not more time before today. Yeah, I just, I'm just letting you know that that was uh, not intentional, just.
Contract with the SROs where that document was also not published until the day of the meeting. And I don't know who makes that decision. I don't think it's appropriate to vote on something so impactful without letting the community see it before, you know, 10 hours before we meet, while people are at work during the day. Um, I just, we should change how we go forward. And this is a good opportunity for us as a board to prove that we're serious about getting community feedback by saying, here, we're transparent. Here's the information. If this is a good plan, an extra 14 days, I don't think is going to make or break it. In fact, it might improve community support for it if that's the case. But if there's no second for my motion, then I guess I'll continue. There's no second? Okay. So I just want to make two comments before I pass it on. One, I'm not confident this plan has broad community support, so I can't support it. Um, and the second one is that I'm worried that we're committing to this big step without exploring other opportunities with our saved money and other opportunities to bring to the community that may be even bigger and better than the plan is now. Or even maybe on top of this plan, if this were to be the plan, supported by the board. And that's partnerships with our municipal partners. Uh, this is all stuff that I believe that we could do with saved uh, dollars. If someone, you know, knows better than me, they can tell me. Um, partnerships with Kirkwood, expanded nutrition programs in our neighborhood, solar panels, electric vehicles. Um, if we explore these opportunities before committing this step, we, you know, it may be that they don't have support in the community, but we may be surprised and find that there is support for these things in the community. And actually, we're thinking too small with this plan and not thinking big enough for what our students deserve, as everybody was talking about. And like I said, I'll let everyone else go for now.
Director Newman?
Kind of a two-part related question. What's the timeline for making the decision on whether Harrison um, would be renovated versus a new build, either on Harrison or Madison property?
Uh, that would come after um, roughly the fall of 2022. Um, it's how the timeline would work out if we're trying to open the, that facility in the fall of 2025.
My second question or concern would be, um, we, we've talked about not wanting to, essentially sort of not having the stomach to tear down historical buildings, but we're kind of kicking it down the road or kicking the can to somebody else. Like it's going to be somebody else's um, job to renovate this building into something that can be usable. But we've talked very much about how expensive they are to maintain. And I just, my concern here is that empty buildings um, can be just as bad as blight or, or inappropriate redevelopment. So what conversations are we having in the community right now around the repurpose of these buildings? And ensuring that if, if truly um, the community wants to preserve historic buildings, what the use will be rather than just saying, we hope it gets repurposed?
So we've had former engagement around that. Um, I have had one entity reach out to me around one spec, one of our specific buildings that are on, on the discussion tonight of a curiosity about their, their wonder, about what that building could be for their purposes. Uh, we have not done proactive engagement around that. Um, and we don't want to, didn't want to put the cart before the horse, uh, so to speak. But uh, that would be, I think, part of this two-year process, which I will back up to the other, the narrative of this slide here. To this, is that we would have to have that engagement um, from our community. Uh, so that would be around C, uh, or on, on, on step one, is to make sure that we are now having those proactive conversations with those entities so that we would have within two years, hopefully, uh, clear conversations about those who are interested and, and that we could engage together and make the best decisions for those buildings. So I don't anticipate we would.
So I don't anticipate we would wait until the new building is built, then having the conversation. I would say it's, and while we're going through this process, we need to now engage with those entities.
Finally, the last thing I'll say is while I am comfortable voting on this tonight, I do think we have to do better at timely communications with the community around these pieces.
Anyone to thank everyone that presented tonight, especially Jennifer, Sarah, Catherine. I mean, it really meant a lot to hear directly from people that are working in that building and part of that community. I know that we can laugh about a water feature and I appreciate you seeing the silver lining, but that is not a feature that I want in any of our classrooms. There was a term, I think, that one of you used, a singleton. I think that was the term that was used. And I'm going to make an assumption that that is one teacher in a grade by themselves. So to what Director Garlock was speaking of, that collaboration is something that I know that I witnessed firsthand when I toured West Willow. And you can tell that spaces like that really work. I have the benefit of working in an open collaborative space and I see those benefits every day. I know that there's lots of frustration about big decisions like this. I personally feel like I was involved with FMP 1.0. We had a work session last month talking about this, though there's some new pieces maybe that are here tonight. A lot of this kind of leads in the direction that I feel like a lot of those conversations were going. So I just appreciate the hard work that so many people in this community put into this. Is everybody in agreement on this plan? Certainly not, right? But do we need to make progress for this community? I do agree with that. And I do just want to point out, like, there were things in here that I don't feel were talked about in the very beginning. Historical preservation, I don't think, was really front and center in a lot of the stuff that we were seeing, and that's what I'm seeing here. So we're not voting tonight on tearing down a school building, but I do certainly agree, Director Newman, because Monroe School is right up the street from my house. So making timely decisions on those buildings, when we know that they're no longer going to be schools, what can they be? So let's please have those conversations sooner rather than later so that the neighborhoods that these schools are in, if they're not going to be schools, can be reimagined in a very positive way because there's so much potential, I think.
All right.
Director Merschbach, another question?
Before we move ahead, in this entire exhibit, there's no mention of cost or money at all. And I'm not really necessarily worried about it. I understand we have a lot of save revenue coming in. But if we have that save revenue coming in, we're already considering a renovation for Harrison. I don't know how, it's off the table, or at least that we're not comparing the costs between renovating the existing buildings as opposed. I think it's just, it would be appropriate to have that conversation. I know it was part of the original conversation of facility master plan one, and now it seems like it's fallen away completely, whereas I keep getting comments from people in the community saying they would like that to be considered. And you mentioned Monroe School. I spent a lot of time around Monroe School. You compare that as a school building compared to an actual school building with students in it, it's like a ghost town up there. There's no life to it or anything like that. There's an empty playground. It's, I'm sure the people who live there think it's a nice building, and I'm sure it is a nice building, but what does it give to the neighborhood? I don't know if it gives the same as it did when it was a school building. The last thing I want to say, and this has all been kind of absent this context, this entire conversation, and this is more of a comment for the board, I think it's a mistake that we're even here. Superintendent Bush said that so much time and energy was spent over the winter and that's great. I appreciate the time and energy everybody put into this. I understand that it's hard work to kind of make these advancements or even have this discussion in the community. But it's, we've lived through two years of a deadly pandemic in our community, 500 people dead. We've got teachers, first of all, parents, you know, all year, school year long, coming to us with concerns about the safety in our buildings, teachers concerned about their safety, teachers who don't have enough, we talk about collaboration, they can't collaborate because the staff isn't there in the building and it's a major disruption to the educational process. As I hear people present it at board meetings, present it in emails, teachers that you know in your personal life, it just seems so obvious what our focus should have been on this winter. And I don't blame you Superintendent Bush because we approve the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. And so we are saying, yes, bring us another update on the facility master plan. That's what we want to hear about while the healthcare community is publishing letters in the paper, taking out full-page ads saying, everybody, please, we can't care for people's health needs because of how bad this is in our community. And we don't even know what the future of this goes on. And so we could be using saved dollars to potentially keep people safe at school over the next however many years. I mean, I appreciate the work that's been done to keep people safe so far, but you look at the results, it's clear that more could be done to keep people safe and healthy. I mean, you just have to follow the news. Again, I don't know how we got here where we're having this discussion when we had record number of COVID cases. COVID is long-term heart issues, if you believe studies, long-term brain issues, increased chance of diabetes. That's what's appropriate to be discussed and we spent all winter getting updates on this. I don't know the last time COVID was on our agenda. And like I said, I don't know how we got to this point, but it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you, Director. Director Garlock?
Yes. I think I am proud to be part of a school district that can walk and chew gum at the same time. And yes, we have been through a very traumatic two years. I don't think that we let that derail the work of the district and this board. The study of our facilities has been an ongoing study. I appreciate the lengths that the administration has gone to, to keep us informed, to have public input sessions, to have a work session for the board where we had time to talk in detail about the plan and what the future of the plan looked like. So I appreciate all the input that we've had, that the community has had. I appreciate the vision that our central administration is showing by moving forward. We are able to do more than one thing at a time. And our facilities, as we've heard tonight from our guests, are in need of updating. So let's not just talk about it, let's do it. Thank you.
Superintendent, I'll have you just clarify the recommendation and what the board is being asked to vote on this evening.
So it is on the screen. It is, and if you prefer, I could put up the visual form, but it is the first step would be to construct a new elementary school on the Arthur Annex for more than likely a three-section building with room to grow for programming purposes and to seek an architectural RFP in the spring, this coming spring with the goal of opening in the fall of '24. That would mean a combination of the attendance areas of Arthur and Garfield. It would also mean that we need to include our neighborhood in the design process and keep the neighborhoods in mind as well as including our community, our Historic Preservation Society, and those in the Arthur and Garfield arenas, as well as our entire Cedar Rapids community on what the future could be of the historic buildings. Secondly, would be the longer-term project, which would be the Harrison-Madison combination, which would start with a, probably a subcommittee of consideration of what our questions might be, seeking an RFP of support, of consideration of what the opportunities might be for that project. It may be a renovation, it may be a new build, and we would want to make sure that we're getting more details, which would mean another update to the board. You would be approving that process to move forward, but then we would let you know what the decision would be based on that, based on that team.
Great.
Any clarification from you, John?
No, I think you got it.
Great, thank you. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. With no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.